There we go.
Alrighty, we are ready.
All right. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a work session of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM by Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joanie Giacominno hasn't called in and she hasn't requested to be excused, so she may pop in. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Yeah.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein, again, she may pop in. City staff, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Hara, public works director, Joe Ward, building inspector, Joseph Estes, city attorney.
Okay, um, this, of course, is a work session. I'm going to allow, since this was basically, I called on it because of a petition that came before us and thought it might take some additional time to, uh, to sort all out between us. Uh, I think I should allow, and I will be allowing, some comments. First, call the public, any letters that have come in, and then whoever will be joining us to make their, their statement. So, um, I understand we do have a letter or two, is that right?
We have one letter that's been submitted, I think, and then I have three that have signed up to speak.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Landers, and are you, are you gonna read the letter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Budge.
Sure.
This is from Vicky Barth. Dear Mayor and Council, I would like to express concern over the issue of responsibility for repair and maintenance of lateral sewer lines throughout the city of Bisbee. In the past, city code was interpreted with the understanding that the city was responsible for lateral lines serving more than one household. Now it appears that the same code has been reinterpreted to place the onus of repair cost of those multifamily lateral sewer lines onto the property owners. This attempt to transfer responsibility via code reinterpretation is both abrupt and unjust. I urge you to rectify the issue. Thank you for your time and consideration. Vicky Barth, Ward 1.
Thank you.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead and bring on the other members who would like to speak, or presidents, and we'll...
I have, um, Donna Burke. Hi, Donna, are you there?
Hello, Donna.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry, it took me a second to unmute. So, um, I did send a letter to the council and mayor today. I don't have a lot to add to that, it's pretty much all, I'll try to encapsulate it in a shorter period of time. In 2005, when we had our sewer project, because the, we had a building moratorium, because our sewers were so bad. So, at that time, our first plan was to replace both the mains and the laterals. So, to me, that says that we knew as a city that we owned the laterals. What happened was we didn't have enough money to do both, so we only did the mains. Then, um, in 2015, 10 years later, when we had to redo the general plan, it said again quite clearly that we see that all of the laterals must be replaced in all of the wards. So, not just Old Bisbee, but everywhere's laterals were failing, and we recognized our responsibility at that time. In 2015, we also got a consultation from Westland Resources, um, under Tom, when Tom Klimic was the public works director. And they mapped all of the laterals that had more than one home or building connected, making those public laterals. So, this was, um, not just one person's idea, this was a team of engineers who mapped this and put it together. Unfortunately, before Tom could get grants to get this up and rolling, he was let go. And then Andy Heretic came in and he was just not quite as facile with grants. So then, as I understand it, nothing happened, it was just kind of let go. Then somehow magically in 2020, we did not own those laterals. We got a new attorney who told us that our code said we did not own these laterals. That seems to me outrageous, that one person can change 115 years of precedence and that something that's going to affect all of us greatly. We had no say in, and not only did we have no say in, we had no notice. So, the first time that I would know I now owned my laterals was when something was wrong. I had no time to prepare, to save, to set myself up for this. So, um, the other thing that's egregious to me about that is that there were no provisions made for the 22 and a half percent of our population that lives below the poverty level. Our median income is below $34,500. Exactly how do we think bunting this into the laps of this populace is gonna work? And if you think that getting an insurance policy on these lines and that a policy is gonna pay out tens of millions of dollars, I'm going to call that naive at best.
We're, we're at your three minutes.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Uh, one or two more, is that right?
Yes, next we have, um, Dwayne Wallace, and let's see.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Oh, yes. Yes, Joe.
Make a correction for the record that, uh, the, the current and new city attorney made no such, uh, recommendation or determination when it came to laterals. That wasn't a, a legal decision that came from, from my office.
Correct, thank you for correcting. Jerry Wallace, uh, thank you. You have three minutes, or a little more if you need, thank you.
All right, Mayor and Council, I'm Jerry, also known as Dwayne Wallace, I'm in, uh, Ward 1. I, I was actually to speak on this because I have a little bit of experience on this issue. I was hired in 2013 by Tom Klimic, and I was part of the lateral project and a part of the sewer collections crew. This is not just a Ward 1 issue, uh, there are lines in Galena, Warren, San Jose, Saginaw, Bakersville, that are on private lines, of private property that have between two, four, and six houses on them. In fact, there's even a house in Old Bisbee on Opera that has a 12-inch fire suppression line that goes through the ceiling. Something, this is something that even under ADQ, during the initial, uh, consent order in, uh, before 2005, before the sewer project, it was, uh, agreed to by the city. Uh, and this is per John Ira, who risked, who retired a month ago. According to John Ira, that the city would maintain the four-inch lines and above more than one connection, that, that was something that's done. We've also taken control of, uh, other people's, or taking responsibility for people's sewer laterals, uh, when they bought a house after we inspected it. If you remember the Tanya Borgeson issue on, uh, Moon Canyon, when she purchased that house, uh, the city agreed to allow her to connect to her neighbors, and the city inspected the line and took responsibility for that. There was another lady, Barbara Hoskins, who lives on Art Avenue, that had five houses going underneath her house, that we replaced that line. I was a part of the Westland Resources project, I, I took them around and looked at it. At that time, it was very expensive to do. This is something that was always been done in the city's budget, by the city's crew, with the way, and I believe it still, it should be done. In fact, Donna Burks, I remember, that was one of the first lines I cleaned out as an employee here, that's a city line, it was, it's always been considered a city line. I don't know when it happened, I know that when I left in 2019, it was still the city responsibility for those lines at the point of second connection. I'm not sure when it changed, I know how it was all the way up until then, um, through our city attorneys at the time, uh, through ADQ and through engineering companies, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, and, uh, for that, uh, recap of history, I think that's an important thing that we will be considering tonight. We have one more, correct?
Correct, um, let's see. We have Ed Matchit. Okay, Mr. Matchit, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think he needs to unmute his mic, it looks like, let's see.
Mr. Matchit, can you unmute and let us hear from you, please? Well, we can unmute for him, but, um, we will, uh, move forward here, we have a bit to cover. I wanna try to get this done a few minutes before we have to move on to our regular session. Mr. Matchit, if you can hear me, if, uh, we can come in later with you, that would be great, but, uh, at this point, we'll just move forward if I can't hear from you. Alrighty, so, as you know, I called for this work session mainly because I wanted to flesh out a lot of the stuff that's been going on and, and get everybody's opinion. There's a lot of history to this, we all know that, um, we have some more than one major problem going on right now, so I guess my first place I'll turn it over to is to our public works director and, and let him, uh, give his side. I know you produced this, uh, summary of preliminary engineering report, um, that you put into the packet, and so, um, Jesus, if you'd like to, uh, take the floor for a few minutes, then we'll, I'll, I'll start to chip in on this, okay?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. So, I, I think this, uh, the summary is, is fairly accurate. Again, uh, the evaluation study, um, did determine that the sewer had failed and there was a, a project to replace the sewer mains, as was previously, um, mentioned. And then, uh, it looks like, uh, in 2005, Westland Resources was a part of that project. I have recently had meetings with Westland Resources so that they can prepare for their update to their preliminary engineers report, which is the report that a lot of people are referring to where they have sewer laterals. They specifically told me, and the engineer that did it, told me that they added those sewer lines because they were told to, not because of any, not because of any engineering, um, interpretation or design or anything, they were told that those sewer lines were public. And my, um, understanding of the city code and interpretation of the city code is that is incorrect. We don't have a, any easements or rights of way going through those private areas. So, it, I believe that they were, uh, misinformed when they completed that original, um, preliminary engineering report. Let me see here as I'm going through this. I know that I was able to go back and, and, and listen to the, um, council meeting from last week, and I know that there was some concern that we were just allowing, um, sewage to, to run down, um, streets, sides of hills, and those types of things. And that is, that's, that's not correct. What we do is, when we have a sewer leak, we have, we get, we get informed of, of a problem, we go out there and take a look, and first thing we do is try to determine whether that is coming from a public sewer main, or if it's coming from a private sewer service. If it's a sewer main, we, we immediately jump on that, we can't, we can't let that go. If it's a sewer service, private sewer service, did we determine that that's, that's what happens? We do every, we make every attempt to inform the, the owner, if the owner isn't the person that told us of the issue, if they are, we let them know this is private, you have to, have to manage that yourselves. And I do understand that there are plenty of sewer laterals, private sewer laterals, where there are multiple people connected to them. One example would be, well, i- i- in general, if there's one coming up, and there's, there's a, the lower person is being affected, and that's gonna happen, um, if it's there, um, you do have a problem, and I know that there were comments made that, that who's supposed to respond to that, and that's one reason why those are not supposed to happen that way. Each, each property should have their own connection so that we don't have an issue of, well, who's responsible for that? One of the things that did, that, um, was a comment was, was made that, um, the sewer latter, laterals were, um, taken over after there was a second connection. I, I would ask Mr. Estes to correct me if I'm wrong, but there's state statutes specifically saying that, that you can't just hand infrastructure over to the city, the city actually has to accept that infrastructure. And I was told that there are, um, there, there have been cases where somebody added on to maybe a kitchen, and they tied into their sewer, uh, the sewer lateral downhill, downstream, and then they said that's yours. I don't, I don't believe that's, you can do that. If, if we do accept some of these sewer levels, I believe that individual one has to go and have a survey, a legal description of, of a sewer easement or utility easement so that we can maintain that legally. And I believe that's in our code also, that if we do need a public sewer that goes through private property, um, that they have to, uh, provide that easement or utility easement. I, I guess with that, I, I, I am only going off of my interpretation of the city code, um, if, if I am told to, that the interpret, where we will be interpreting in a different way, um, I'll follow that.
Okay, um, thank you, I know that part of your consensus here was that that is, that the decision is supported by our ordinance, which is 13.4. But what I wanna ask you is if you go further down into our city code, if we're gonna use city codes, if you look at, uh, 13.2C, it says, "Consumer shall safeguard the city property placed on the consumer's press, uh, premises and shall permit access to it only by authorized city representatives." So, to me, that's the first thing telling me that, that we've put in our code that the, uh, that we have lines that are on private property and in our code saying our people can access it. If you go a little further down that code under F, it says, "When the service of the cons, of the consumer shall require the lane of a city sewer line or installation of, of any other city property on, under, across, or over the consumer's property, the consumer will grant the city an easement right-of-way license or installation." Now, I know that's for a new installation, not the, all these ones that are existing, but again, it refers to the fact that, that, um, you know, anything that goes across private property will, will be granted, uh, the consumers. Finally, of course, is, is, is the interference with, uh, employees of the city, that's 13.4.3, "To interfere in any way with employees of the city in the discharge of their duties, either in tapping a sewer main, sewer pipe, excuse me, a sewer pipe, a main or lateral belonging to the city, or in laying connection to such pipe, main, or lateral." So here, again, it refers to city laterals. So, I, I guess, you know, it seems to me we have some real problems trying to interpret a city code where we talk about city laterals, we talk about, um, them being on consumer premises and so on. So, I, I wanted to bring that up as, as something to consider outside of just the, the one point of the ordinance on 3.4, which talks that we aren't responsible for those. But, so, I'm good for a minute, Joan, go ahead.
Problem is, there is absolutely no definition of a lateral in the code. So, how can you even say that it's the city's responsibility if you don't even have it in your code?
So, that's a very good point, that's maybe what we're gonna work on tonight.
Well, that, that's the point, the point is, this whole, um, portion of the, um, 3, 13.4, needs to be totally rewritten. And the, um, the other problem is, if you're gonna do a lateral, then you're gonna have to be very, you know, you're gonna have to determine what is a lateral and what is not a lateral. The other problem is, I bet you that there is nowhere that it says which, um, laterals or mains or whatever is, um, owned by the city, because when it talks about a public sewer, it just says that's whatever's owned by the city. Do we even have a record of anything?
Oh, I, I can maybe try to, to add to the, to that, or clarify that, we do have, um, maps that were created by the, uh, Border Environmental Corporation Commission, um, in May of 2000. Those maps were, uh, generated by the engineering firm Gannett Fleming, Inc. And those ones are in updated, well, updated as much as, uh, as they could in 2000, we're obviously 20 years down the road, but those ones have our sewer mains in there. And a lot of those sewer laterals, what I'm gonna consider private right now, um, are not, they, those are not depicted on our sewer maps from this map. And, and this was done not by, not by the city of Bisbee, this was done by the Border Environmental Corporation Commission.
Well, who, did they determine that those were the only, uh, ones that there were response, was it a matter of responsibility or just a matter of mapping out where the line, where the main lines were?
Well, that, I don't know, I couldn't tell you, um, but it is, it is, uh, one of the maps that we have in, in probably the map that we use the most.
So, so Joan, if I might, one thing I brought up was basically state law, and, and this is something we need to, to, I think maybe, uh, Joe should look at, it's, it's the, uh, Aquafor protection permits, it's the general provisions, it's R19-9-101, which is under the definitions, which says, "A sewer collection system," this is what their definition of a sewer collection system is, "It's a means of pipelines, conduits, manholes, pumping stations, forced mains, and other structural devices that collect, contain, and convey sewage from the source to the entry of a sewer treatment facility," makes lots of sense, "or an onsite wastewater treatment facility serving," and then here's the part that we need to really focus on, "serving sources other than a single-family dwelling." So, this is state law that says, "Serving sources other than a single-family drought, dwelling." So, I, I'm kind of taken aback that, under the, under the state, they're defining our sewer system as what we're responsible for is anything other than, than a source from a single-family dwelling. Once two lines come together, I don't know if that's a, a, a single-family dwelling. So, that's one thing I wanted to, 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 uh, to mention that I brought, that I looked at, but, uh, is there, let's, let's move on and let everybody have a chance, just for a second, Joan, if you don't mind, Lou, go ahead, thanks, and then I'll go to Frank.
Who'll probably answer my question anyway.
Okay, thanks. It's a work session.
It's a work session. This is a very complex issue that has taken 100 years to develop, and we're not gonna solve it in an hour tonight, okay? That, everybody needs to keep that in mind, this is going to take a long time to resolve, and it's going to be a complex issue. As far as ownership of laterals go, in the report, which is 178 pages, uh, the authors address ownership of laterals, and they state, "HCSs, which is Household Connection Sewers, running from building to sewer main, with main line that is under the streets of Tombstone Canyon, generally are considered private by most municipalities and wastewater utilities." That is the issue here that drives the train. Who is gonna pay the $30 million to rehabilitate the failed sewer system in Old Bisbee, serving 600 homes? That's the bottom line, and that's the issue that we, the city council, has to address, and we have to make a determination. Are we going to take responsibility for those HCS2 main sewer main connections? Now, people, the report states, "The city of Bisbee considers any lateral shared, shared by multiple users to be a pub, public lateral," and they codified this decision with ordinance 13-4.2. Mr. Harrow can correct me if I'm wrong, but that ordinance did not codify ownership of those laterals. And that is an issue that we have to address. Do we, the city of Bisbee, the government of Bisbee, want to accept responsibility for those laterals in code? And so, are willing to, are we willing to accept the liability that goes along with that? The city manager has never said that she's changing the interpretation of the code. She had, that she's interpreting the code according to law. And if you read what the law says, then you won't have an argument with her. And I'd like to take a moment to read what the report says about ownership. And this is a quote from the report, uh, done by, uh, wait, uh, I can't even remember the name of the company.
Westland?
By Westland, okay? "The city addresses the property ownership issues with respect to sewer lateral operation and maintenance by city ordinance, which allows the city access to any existing sewer laterals for operations and maintenance, regardless of the underlying property ownership. However, this right of access is not a true easement on privately owned property. The city would have to consider the implications. Should the sewer lateral be relocated as part of construction, contractors working on the sewer laterals in areas that are not city right-of-way? In addition, there are funding agency requirements specifically for projects funded by U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Rural Utility Service funded related to rights of way and easement certification in the projectary area that must be completed prior to construction. The city may not currently meet the argument criteria for many of the existing sewer locations. Carefully determine the scope of any sewer rehabilitation project and the benefits versus and risks of the project. The benefits of the rehabilitation must be weighed against responsibility, expense, and liability for the city. Cost prohib, excuse me, rehabilitating private laterals would be outside the city's typical realm of responsibility. Besides being cost prohibitive and creating the unnecessary risk associated with work on private property, some federal funding may be available to assist very low-income houses perform private HCS replacements encouraged when the encouragement or requirement for private homeowners to perform necessary HCS repairs and should be considered." That's the issue here, who's gonna pay the $30 million to rehabilitate the laterals in Old Bisbee? And we're not talking about Warren, we're not talking about San Jose, their issues are minor compared to this, according to this report. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, this is a responsibility the city has, and we have to address it, and we have to find a solution for it. But we need to do it in a legal, in a responsible, and a, and a logical, systematic effort. And so far, all I've heard is, is really hysteria on everybody's part because they don't understand the engineering issue involved here.
Part of that, Westland Resources, I might add, um, they said, originally, it was a $10 million project, could, could get, could go more, um, the 30, I, I've not seen that in any writing, but, but that was, of course, in 2015, so prices have changed, however...
Mr. Mayor, I can read you the section that says $30 million out of the report, if you'd like to hear it.
I, I guess I missed that, so, thank you, I, I, I read 10 million in the, in the, in the, in the printout, what it showed. But outside of that, I guess, under the same report, if you read, it says, "The majority of these calls," and they're talking about overflows, "were regarding public laterals." So, again, they talk about public laterals. They were informed that public laterals are after two, two of these came together. Do realize, we spent, in 2015, the city spent $60,000 plus a $50,000 grant to get this study to move forward on this. And now, for some reason, we're walking away from $60,000 worth of city money if, if we don't believe in this report. So that's another thing I wanted to bring up, was we have to think about money. Frank, I know you have, you had your hand up. Thanks.
Yeah, I was, I agree with Lou. Of course, this is going to be a step, one step at a time process to solve this. But the reality is, we need to take care of these common laterals presently. And I, I think the city has to step up and do that until we find some solution how to fix the overall problem, which is going to take a while to do. We're going to find funding for it.
Joanie, you have your hand up. Thanks.
Um, I have a question. You know, you talk about these private laterals that are coming out. And then the city taps into people's private laterals and lets someone else in. Yeah, don't shake your head no at me.
I've been here. I promise you that.
Well, I'm not saying not since you've been here. I'm just saying, I, okay, let's say my house, but my, I'm just going to use mine as an example. It's not real. I'm not pointing the finger at you.
Okay.
I actually am pointing a finger at past public works that allowed, or even past building inspectors that allowed this to occur. And now that's not a private lateral anymore. Because my neighbor is now tapped into my lateral, and my neighbor and I don't like each other. And so, his sewage is backing up because he's flushing diapers down the toilet, and I can't get it resolved, but I'm going to have to pay for it.
Exactly why you don't want that. Exactly why that shouldn't be allowed.
Issue, though. It's been allowed to happen. And now we have these people who don't have private laterals. There's two and three people feeding into them. And I have people in my ward on Black Knob. I have people in Bakersville that have this issue. And the, and some of them are where, warring with their neighbors. Some of them aren't, but some of them are on crusty, dilapidated sewer lines that were, that were talked about being condemned when prior public works people were there and prior building inspector. But those people left and nothing got done, and now they've got these potential sewer in their backyard. So why are they going to be held responsible? I mean, I, I just, I understand the cost. I get the cost. But what I don't understand is how we can justify calling them private laterals when the city has allowed other lines to tap into them.
They could not have been allowed to tap into them.
I, I agree with this. I used to put sewer lines. I mean, I did that when I was a kid, a kid, when I was younger. When I worked in Colorado, I installed sewer lines. Never, ever did we have a lateral that was fed in from other people. That was just, didn't happen. And I, I hear about this, and I, it boggles my mind. And then for us to be holding homeowners that didn't even agree to it.
I, I think that's where I, we're looking for direction on, on how council wants us to proceed with those. I, you know, I, I have made an interpretation from what I understand as city code. But if, if we want to give direction in, in a different way, we will do so.
I saw Joan's hand first, Lou.
Lou, Lou was first.
Oh, go ahead, Lou.
He had his pencil up.
Your hand's bigger than his pencil.
Well, that's because I'm closer to the screen.
Okay. Go ahead, Lou. Thanks.
I don't care if the city assumes responsibility for these laterals. That's a council decision. All I want is for the council to be aware of what it means to assume responsibility for these laterals, which we have not done by code or any other legal instrument. If we're going to do that, let's do it with full knowledge of what it's going to cost the city and what our liability requirements will be. My feeling is, number one, the city should continue to respond to emergency calls for sewage spills or overflows. We've done that in the past. That we should continue to do it.
Yes.
Two, we, as the city, should determine what the scope of the sewer project rehabilitation should be and what the cost of it should be. And right now, the only thing we have to go on is this unadopted report done in 2015 by Westland, which is, by the way, a very good engineering report. They've identified the problem. They've proposed solutions, and they've mapped out a zoning plan for all of Old Bisbee. And that is a wonderful thing. We got our money's worth in that. The city should then seek out funding for the long-time repair of the sewer system, regardless of who owns the sewer. It's imperative that we find a way to fund this. Emergency taxation, an extension of the streets and infrastructure tax in 2023. There's all sorts of raised revenue to fix this problem without us accepting the legal liability for ownership of those, of those laterals. In the long run, the legal issue, right of ways, easements, access, can all be resolved so that the mitigation for the repair of the sewer can take place within the law. And I think that's what the city manager has been trying to say all along. She's not trying to reinterpret the code. She's trying to find a solution to a very serious capital investment problem. A capital investment that we do not have the resources at this time to address.
Sure.
And that, that's the way I'm looking at this. We can do this as a city. We can accept those laterals and fix those laterals. But we need to do it in a logical, progressive system.
Correct. And that's what they were doing in 2015 when they did the big study. We spent $60,000 to do that. They were going after the grant process to do that. And they actually had one lined up. Unfortunately, it fell off. And I'm hoping that this, we could update this 2015 study and go after a grant process. When you talk about the legality, 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 we have to consider, what makes it legal is what we decide as a council to put into code. If we say, when one or more single-family homes come together, it becomes a city lateral, that's legally then, that takes care of the whole situation. And, and that, to me, is the solution to this. Now, there's no way we're going to be able to go around and, and clean up and, and take care of every one of these. But what has happened over the last 50, 50 to 100 years is, when we have a single problem, the city came out and handled that one single problem. We handle it on a case-by-case basis, and that is what has gone on for years. That is why I feel that we're, there's so much blowback on this currently, is we were doing it. We were assuming the, the, the liability. We were assuming the legal responsibility to handle those lines, and now all of a sudden, we aren't. That is the big problem that's facing us. And we, as a, as a council, need to decide if that's something that, that we want to go back and, and, and do what we did before, or the city did before, or do we want to, to do something different? So I, I want to give really quickly, Leslie or Anna, anybody, either one of you want to chime in for a minute? You know, we, if you could.
Sure.
Leslie.
Yeah, no, this has been, I don't know anything about sewer lines, and this has been a lot for me to wrap my head around, so that's why I've mainly been listening. And, but I feel strongly that the city should continue to do what they've been doing. And I understand this is very complicated. And I think that it would be good to look at grants to fix this. And I liked the plan where the city was broken up into zones and to pilot Zone 1 and to see what we can do. And I feel like everybody who's spoken has made sense tonight, and that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Well, Anna, you've been here longer than anybody. Put your two cents in.
I agree with Leslie. And actually, what everybody is saying, I mean, we have a mess here. We have to deal with it. And Lou is, is correct in that we just handle things as they come, and we need to start looking for grants. And just continue. But, but Dwayne made a good point, too, when he first started in saying that, you know, when these issues came up.
The city went out and did it. I mean, we know because it's a health hazard. So I would like to see us continue with it.
But still look at a long-term solution.
Yeah. It's another huge infrastructure situation, and obviously, we will need to
Feedback. I'd like to turn my sound off.
Yeah. So, all right. Okay, Joan. Sure. Thanks.
I would like to ask Mr. Essis, is there anything that can be done on a legal basis as far as going back and looking at maps and so on to see if there was any designation at any time? I know that there was a quick, quick, a quick deed that was done by, I guess it was Phillips, Phillips Dodge at the time, saying that the, the laterals went to the city. But it also had a caveat at the end of it that indicated that that's in case, you know, it was our property or not. There wasn't really any definitive statement that it was their property that they were turning over to the city. The other thing is, I want to make sure that this is done correctly the first time. Because what has happened in the past, there hasn't been an interpretation of this code. Because if there, there's no way that you can interpret from that code that we owned the, the letters. Didn't even have a definition of the laterals. This was just the way things were done. And we need to make sure that the code is exactly the way things we want, the way we want things done and done legally.
Guess that was a question to you, Joe.
The answer is no. No. As, as everybody has mentioned, it's, this is, I think, a situation where everybody understands that it's super complicated. And essentially, everybody's right to a certain extent. Yes, you, you can have, you know, a statute that talks about a single-family dwelling source being considered a lateral, and, but you can have multiple single-family dwelling sources on that. That there's nothing in that statute that says a single, single-family dwelling source. It just identifies single-family. And a designation from that, between that and, and usually, commercial and other types of sources of, of discharges, because your commercial discharges have more regulations under ADQ than a single-family source discharge does. And again, you know, the, the fact that a, 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 a private engineer report references and makes assumptions of ownership doesn't establish ownership on behalf of the city. The city can only obtain ownership to property, which would include easements and rights of ways and things like that, by way of ordinance. It's, you know, as Mr. Harrow said, you know, I can't, as a, as a citizen, say, well, I, I want this to be city property, so I'm just going to deed it to the city or give it to the city and deem it declared city property. The city has to take an affirmative action to accept that property and that responsibility. So there, there, there would need to be an ordinance that establishes that ownership of, of the laterals. You know, and it, it's not uncommon. Many, and I was doing some research on this, and most jurisdictions do have definitions in their code that specifically define their laterals. Because laterals are also referred to as service lines. And those are typically owned and maintained by the property owners. Why? Because the property owner controls what's going on on, on their own property. So if I decide to plant a tree right next to my sewer lateral, and that tree grows roots and grows into that sewer lateral, I'm responsible for that because I, I'm the one who caused that, that issue. So there's so many things that, that play into these issues. And, you know, it's great to be able to come down to Bisbee last week and, and place eyes on it because Bisbee is very unique with how a lot of its, you know, especially in Old Town, its neighborhoods are set up. You know, other concerns that I see, you know, even assuming the, the, the city were to revise its code into better-defined laterals, legal access, you have to have legal descriptions and easements. And what happens to those laterals that run under somebody's house? You know, there, there's just so many questions and, like, Councilmember Pollock said, you know, this is not something that, that, you know, it was something created over 100 years. It's been in, in the making of over 100 years, and it's not something that can be easily resolved in one hour. But I think this is a great beginning discussion on that with regard to how to try to address this, especially because of the substantial cost associated with this. And how will that cost be borne? Will that cost be borne by all of the, the residents of Bisbee? Or will it be borne by the specific districts that have these issues? You know, there are ways, and I've talked to, with my partners who specialize in, in, in public financing and improvement districts and stuff. And there are ways to go about, you know, addressing those financial concerns to be able to, to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. But as the council knows, you know, there are far more projects on your CIP budget and plan for the next five years than what the city has funds for. There is, I don't think there's a municipality in Arizona that has sufficient, sufficient general source revenues or other revenues to cover all of the CIP projects that, that they would love to, to accomplish. And that's one of the, the, the difficult parts of, you know, as you are the council members, and it's your decision as to, you know, what takes priority over, over other things. So there isn't a, an easy, short yes or no answer to the, to the issue. I, I can say that, yes, absent some type of ordinance that, you know, that identified the easements and, and the, the, the ownership that know technically that the city would not own those laterals, even if there's multiple laterals connected. Even if the city may have negligently allowed other owners to tap into other persons' laterals, that still doesn't create an ownership on the city for that, that line. It may create liability for the city having said, yeah, you can go ahead and hook on to somebody else's private property line. And then there's, you know, outside of that, there's, there's been issues where if these laterals have been existing for, you know, over 10 years, and, you know, the, the owners would have an argument that they have adverse possession of, of that easement by way of prescription over a certain period of time and, and different things like that.
Can I ask you one thing real quick, Joe?
Yes, sir.
The, the legal part of, what is it? Estoppel, where actually, the city has, it's been asserted that, or implied by previous action, we've done this for 100 years. Is there a legal situation where the, the property owners could come back on us with that, saying, well, you've done this and done this, and now you're not? Am I, you have the correct word. You know what I mean, right?
Yeah, no, there, there is the, the, it's, it's a legal doctrine called estoppel, where you're stopped from, from taking certain types of actions that are inconsistent with your prior actions. And they, they could make an, an estoppel argument when it came to, to maintenance. But there, there, you can't make an estoppel argument when it comes to ownership. So, you know, I, I do see, you know, there, there is, I mean, and that's something that the council absolutely can make a decision on. Now, is, you know, the council can say, okay, until we are able to fully resolve these outstanding issues, the city is going to continue to respond to and address and maintain emergency situations where you have clogs and overflows and, and things like that. You know.
Or even, or even fix the problem if it's such that we can't just keep it unclogged. I mean, I guess that's, anyway, we're getting down close to the end.
Legal access with, and I'd recommend, and I helped Mr. Harrow and, and Ms. Access with, and I'd recommend and I helped, uh, Mister Harrow and, and Miss Coleman prepare a, uh, you know. A, a little sign off for, for authorization to come on the property. That's my concern is that if we don't have a legal access or legal easement. We need some type of written acknowledgement that, that the city has authorization to go onto somebody's private property.
Okay, um, real quickly, Lou, or I'm gonna try and tie this up so we have a minute before we have to go into our other session. But go ahead, Lou.
I agree with Mister Estes. The most we can accomplish right now is to agree to continue to do emergency repairs on calls that come in. For sewer leaks, overflows or, or anything that we've been doing in the past. The rest of it is going to take a long time and a lot of discussion and a lot of decision making. And it's not gonna happen overnight. Thanks, Joe. That was a good.
Did I just make?
Sure.
Who's gonna be the expert on this? I mean, how do we even start this? I don't have any, any background in this and as a council member, I would feel very uncomfortable. Make, saying, you know, yes, this is the way we wanna go. So who, who is gonna give us the, the information that we need?
My, my suggestion is there's a legal issues that deal with this. There's, um, you know. Basically, construction issues that, uh, our public works director would have to work together. And of course, the city manager to try to, to try to come to something they can bring to us. That, that we can give them direction that we, we, we want this to continue to, to go forward. I would like to see us apply for a grant. Um, we, no way do we have the money to fix everything right now, but we do have enough money to take care of the problems that pop up. One at a time. We've done that for years. And that's where I would like to be. And, and in closing really quick, I hate to, you know, I know I have to have a two minutes before the next one. But I'm gonna make a suggestion and just throw it out there and everybody give a thought about it. But, but, you know, every time I go to Safeway, there's a little thing said, would you like to donate X number of whatever to, uh, a fund? To help somebody. And what I'd like us to do is have maybe a check mark on our, our, our sewer bill. That says, would you throw an extra dollar in if you can afford it to put a voluntary fund together? So that to help people that can't afford to fix their individual lines or whatever. And that way, we would be able to, to, you know, have a bit. We have over four, over three thousand, um, um, accounts in sewer. Even if we get not even a third of those, if we can start throwing it, you know. Uh, close to several hundreds or thousand, a thousand dollars a month into this. We could do a lot for the people that, that really need the help, I think, um, on these. And even ones where many of them come together and they can't all agree. It might be a way for us to, 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 to bridge this gap until we can get a, uh, some sort of grant to really do the whole thing. I, it's an idea. I don't have all the answers for it, but I, I'm hoping people could consider, uh. Um, maybe, uh, donating, it will set up some sort of fund. Uh, I know Kerry's over there going, oh, another phone, but, but, but I think we can do it. Um, anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that and think about it and, and hopefully maybe bring it forward to you all. Cause I think that would be something that we could, um, you know, take care of the people that need it. So, um. If you allow me, Anna, oh, I see your hand. Anyway, if you allow me, I'll, I'll try and, I'll work with Joe. And, and, and Jesus and, and our city manager and, and try to start putting some stuff together. But I think we can send a message tonight. We're in agreement that we need to handle these situations as they come up. We don't want sewer flowing outside. We need to make a, a, a much harder concerted effort to do so. And if it's just one of those things that there's no way we can keep it unclogged. Well, then we need to, to go a little further and see if, uh, if we can't just fix it ourselves and, and, and alleviate the problem. So I'm hoping that's where we got to tonight. That was my goal. Um, and I appreciate everybody's, uh, um, openness and so on. Um, I know I talk a lot, but, but yeah, we got four minutes, so. Ashley, we're gonna, I'm gonna call this meeting to, uh, to, to an end. If I have a motion, uh, this work session and then we'll have a break real quick and, and, um, and get back into our regular session.
And can I ask a really quick question? It's Donna. Um, when you're talking about cleaning these spills and overflows, are you also talking about doing it on private land or only on public and stairways?
No, it, if, if they will allow us on the, on to their public land, we have a form now. Say, yeah, you can come on and do what you need to do. Then, yeah, no problem. If somebody blocks us, then that's a whole nother issue. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I have a motion, I make a motion to adjourn this work session. Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second to adjourn this work session. All those in favor say aye. Pose, nay, so moved this, uh, session. Work session is adjourned and we'll see you in three or four minutes.